The order at seven oh five, welcome everybody. So you don't have three sections tonight. Okay, so can we get a motion to the bottom agenda? Liz, a second.
There you go.
Hi.
And approval of the minutes. I'm just. Can we have any discussion on the minutes and directions? Well, hearing none. So we'll move on. So tonight, the agenda is, let me. Because I think we're going to have a little bit more to talk about in that building and organization. We had some updates this week that we're going to require some discussion. I imagine we'll have a good discussion around fundraising. And then. We had a, I forgot to list the old issues that we have the annual report to approve. That's an interesting process, but anyway, so we'll get started with the rest of our report.
Okay, so the upcoming programs. You can see we have coming up. Well, we just had Lego Club, but we've got yoga again and baby cafe. And Liz is giving a talk on her newest book, so we're going to be doing that. So if anyone wants to join us on Tuesday, that would be great. We are having another homeschool class on in April. The Easter party is scheduled for the 19th. There's a blood drive happening on the 24th of April, and we're having Chris Ferraro is coming back and doing a gardening program about how to plant native garden, you know, make a native garden. And she's going to be here on April 26th and then trivia night on the 27th. We do have other things happening. I just haven't put them all out on the calendar yet. We started a new weekly crap program crafting circle that Maria Sphere is doing. And it's so far, it's been running pretty good. She's got six people coming. They're doing felting right now and then just keep moving on and see how that goes. I decided to put in a different way to show you the statistics of this of our programs, just to give you a little bit more of a clear idea of the age ranges. This is the statistics I use for my annual report, so you guys can see all of this stuff. I thought it was a little bit easier. Honestly, it's easier for me because I just cut paste. So it works so well. Yeah, if you'll look at the homeschool nutrition class. Oh, there were 31 kids here for that program. And it was a little overwhelming for Cheryl, but she got through it and. I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean. Yeah, yeah. And she had, we did a, it's not even on here. We did a homeschooling, how to graduate your student homeschooling. And there were eight people here yesterday for that. So she's got, there's a good group coming and we're going to be doing upcoming will be a nutrition class or excuse me, health class, and then there's going to be the fire department's coming. And there was something else that she's going to do too, which she's got it all scheduled for the next couple of months. So it's great. I'm really happy that the. There is, but it's hard to get them coming here. I've tried it in the past and we had one time we had like 20 something people or like 28 to 30. And it's like, okay, yes, let's meet once a week. Let's do this. Nothing. I have the next time I got only two people came. So but the fact that she's got this group coming is really helpful.
They need to to do to meet environments that might be hard to do, organized to do. Really nice.
Yes, I have to give Sarah. Yeah, I have to give Sarah Walther. She's a homeschool mom local and she's actually Cheryl's daughter in law. She's the one who came up with the idea of doing those weird little things that you have to do for the state that are just like, I don't need to tell you, I was going to teach my kid about bike safety. Here's a helmet, you know? So it's it's going well. And I know that as when I was homeschooling, those are the kind of programs I definitely would have wanted to. So I'm very, very grateful that they're doing that. So yeah, okay, so that's those things. Circulation's down just a little bit for kids books, but up for adult books. You can see all the circulation numbers are pretty much the same as what they were last year. Same thing for visits. We're actually up for February compared to the previous year. So it was kind of nice. And I think we're going to have the same thing for March because it's definitely been busier here. Over the even just over the past couple of weeks. We added so far in eight in 2025, we've added 10 adults and six kids have now got library cards. Excuse me, and one out of system adult. You're going to see that this month we didn't withdraw anything. But as I put in my report, I'm doing a huge weeding. If you look on the shelves, you can see all of the books that have labels crossed out because they're all books that haven't been checked out in 10 years or more. So we're doing, I'm doing that. I'm doing DVDs. We're going to just go through the whole collection and just try and keep it updated because we're running out of room on the shelves. We're running out of room big time. So.
And you're still selling those?
Trying to.
Okay.
Trying to. So our, even though it hasn't been officially approved, the New York State Annual Report has been officially turned into DLD. And we'll just hope, keep our fingers crossed that they don't come back to me with some kind of weird like corrections that they want me to make. I attended a DA meeting on March 7th virtually, so I didn't get a lot of the information craft circle. Still in contact with Yvonne Meekins. We're going to try and do another senior group. We're going to be in touch about getting technology classes to them through Renster County, excuse me, through Cornell Cooperative Extension. I did attend a presentation by one of the candidates for UHL executive director, which is very interesting. Seems like a good candidate. I know the other person, so but I also wasn't able to be there because I was on my way. I had a very extensive meeting with Megan and Paul from the architects. I'll go over that in a minute. I also had an extensive call with Tim Burke about some questions that had been brought up during the last meeting about the New York State Annual Report and why there was some of the things in terms of the trustee positions. And it looks like we're going to have to change our bylaws again or update the bylaws again. I'll go over all that in a second. I'll just get through the other sillier things. The, so I sent you all the blog posts that was was sent out from the New York State Health, Healthy New York, I guess. No, it's called Hunger Solutions. So I thought that was interesting. I did talk to Debbie Fleming at Rensselaer County. We're still, we are looking into doing a food program here at the library, not just at summer camp anymore. Because I think that a lot of people who could use the food don't want to go in, you know, they uncomfortable going into the middle of summer camp and asking for that food. So we qualify to be a rural, non-congregate feeding site. So we're looking at giving out meals that people can get twice a week. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they would get on Monday and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they'd get on Wednesday. We're not quite sure that they'll let us do this yet, but we're in the works. So I'm hoping that this will be something we can do to give all of the other kids who need it the help. So I'm going to, I'll keep everyone updated on that. We did receive our county grant funding for from Rensselaer. That came through. I just deposited that. I also last night got the town tax money, so that has been deposited as well. So I just made a nice big deposit today. And one of the nice things, we received a $1,500 grant from Stewards to go towards the children's projects. So that money will be earmarked for that, which is very happy with that. I did ask for 3,000, but they gave us 1,500, which is better than what I was expecting, so. And tomorrow I have a staff meeting happening with Jen to train on the new A. So that we will all be completely up to date on having said. All right, so circling back with Tim and Upper Hudson. So the question had been on here and one of the questions it was if our library has a range of trustees, which we do, our range states in our bylaws that we have five to 25 positions. How many voting positions are stated in the library's current bylaws? We don't have any. There's nothing in the bylaws that say how many we have. So his explanation or suggestions was that that voting range is really just how the state makes sure that we have something listed as a quorum. And it's the total number of board voting positions that we have. Like right now, we're, we have nine positions, eight people are here, one position is vacant. If we should ever get 10, 10 people on the board, that would be like, whoa. We would have to change our bylaws to state that there's 10 voting positions. So his suggestion was to change our bylaws and write in a couple of different things, which is listed on the report. So right now in our meetings and number four, what we say is that we have five people, five trustees constitutes a quorum. He would suggest that we always, we don't put a specific number on that. Just say that the quorum is always always one more than half of the simple majority of board members. That way it keeps it open. We don't have to change it. The thing though, that we do have to add in would be something similar to saying the current complement of the board is nine trustees. And then if we get 10, we change it to 10, but it has to go through a vote and we have to say that so that it's all nice. I mean, New York State's not going to come and tell you we can't operate as a library, but apparently that needs to be stated in there and it needs to be voted on and all that other fun stuff. So I'm. Yeah, I mean, right now we we always, we're stating that we have one empty spot, which is why we're not at eight because we say we're still there. So if we say we're, you know, we just can't get more than seven, then we would have to change it to seven. I mean, it's not really changing too much, but. It's just because it doesn't match the new state. The report that I have to fill in. So whether or not it really matters, I don't think New York State's coming in auditing us and saying you can't.
I mean, I don't find any change. It just feels like you have to make them change. Want to. About and then.
Yeah.
I don't really. If that's what we need to do, we do it. And I mean, should we keep it at 25 trustees?
No, you should keep, he said definitely keep it as a range because then that gives you the freedom to move throughout. But in terms of right now, we have nine voting slots. So I don't know. So the the range isn't the problem. It's the voting positions. So that's what they want to know. So I can go through and just change where it is on the buffet, on the bylaws and then send it out to you guys next month and you can vote on it.
And we're going to say we shouldn't put the current compliments of the board is nine voting slots for trustees. I mean, if the change is here in your court, we can have a motion to say we'll make these changes to the bylaws, which is to say in article four. Some new, a new app item in article.
In article four, yeah, that would be a new one.
So add a new. They the current complement of the board is nine trustees. Does it have, so that doesn't have to say voting, you don't have to use the word voting or whatever. And then in article six, which is the meetings area, we're going to say, we're going to change number four and say that the quorum is always one more than half of a simple majority. Can someone make that option?
I'll do that for next one.
Yeah, you just do. I mean, like that is what that's. We just feel like that. Yeah, we agree.
I think you, I think their practice would be to track.
Okay, I'll do it for next one. Okay.
So if we have nine members, a quorum then would be five plus one.
No, five.
What says always one more than half the simple majority, the nine, four and a half? Understand, well, it says more, one more than the simple.
Five is a majority.
It says one more. It says one more than the simple majority.
You don't want it to be six because you don't want it to have.
Just make it the simple majority.
It's always.
Yeah.
The simple majority of the work. Okay. All right. Thank you. So the biggest thing that happened this week, while this, there's more than that, but the. What is going to need to be voted? So I met with Paul and Megan and we have the invitation to bid for the project for the children's room. So drawing bid materials, everything has been submitted to you guys so that you can approve this invitation to bid that we can then give it to or then. So what will happen is, is if this all looks good to everybody, we say yes, you vote for it, you make an unofficial motion. And then we let Megan and Paul know. And they will then contact all of the different people that need to be contacted in order to get bids. There was a lot that we talked about in terms of what needs to happen. They have two contractors that are interested in it. I had five and I just got an email from Cheryl that says that there's another person who's interested in getting bids, you know, putting a bid in for it. So I'll give that person's name over as well. So Olson, I think Greg Olson, I can't remember if it's his last. I know the last name is Olson. I don't remember his first name. But I've given. There's quite a few that I gave already. So and we have had people who are interested in putting out bits for us. Okay, this works. And because we're an association library, we don't have to do a public bid opening. We just have, we can do it privately, which is really nice so that we don't have to deal with, you know, anything that might not be too good. So the plan is, is to have the bid bids due on April 10th. That's if everything goes through tonight. And then we'll have a board, a meeting before April 17th, which is our next board meeting to choose whoever did the contract we want to use. One of the big things that I know that Paul talked about that we need to decide is whether or not this project should require bonding. He has highly, highly, highly suggested that we do require bonding. I don't know how that will affect some of the local guys. So.
Eliminate people, but that would be for the best.
It's like an insurance policy that they have so that if they can't finish the work, that bonding agency will then pay to finish the work so that we don't get screwed. Yeah. So that's one of the things that needs to be decided. They did say that the cost is generally five to eight percent of the project. And that was built into the original budget created by Plank. So the original cost, which of course now things are probably going to be going up seeing as how we're having so many issues with things. We are scheduled, I've scheduled a pre-bid meeting with Megan, which means on March 31st at 10 o'clock. We're inviting all of the people who are interested in the project to come see with the space, go over the details. She'll walk them through everything of what we want to do. I've already come to, so the action items that I showed you are basically what I've done so far. Roden's going to help us with the technology closet, you know, he, he said he'll, once the contractor is chosen, he'll come and talk to them about what we need to do and where we can put things.
So the pre-bid meeting is with the contractors. They all show up at the same time.
Yep, or they're invited to show up at the same time. I spoke to John Laporta about the heat pumps and the mechanical work that needs to get done. He's going to be with me sometime this week, I'm hoping tomorrow. He's been having trouble getting materials and supplies because of things are out of stock or just having trouble getting things into the country.
Parents?
Yeah, something. I don't know. But the pumps he originally quoted for have been, it's been really hard to find, but he said he has some good alternatives that he's going to look at too. So we're going to work on that. The hazardous materials, we're going to work with Column Divine, who's Patrick's quality painting and remodeling. He also is a contractor and he's very interested in this as well. He came to the library, so he'll be able to do at least the hazardous materials for us. Furniture and shelving, we're going to have to look at soon because right now turnaround time is ridiculously long. 10 to 12 weeks for furniture and 20 to 24 weeks for shelving. We buy our, all of the stuff through the New York State contracts. We get contract pricing. One dealer's in New York, the other's in Ontario, which could become a problem. So I'm going to meet with Megan next week to start looking at different options and, you know, kind of try to see where we can go with it. I do need to try and in terms of getting the kids' room emptied, book trucks. Do we take out all the books in here? So we've got some planning to do around all that stuff. And we have to decide whether or not if everyone's okay with using this as a temporary kids' room while we have the work done. I did say that we would want to stay open during the work and that so the contractors will have to close that space off. Because I don't think it would make sense to completely close down unless there's a few days when it just has to be done, but I'd rather keep it. Exactly, exactly. So that's pretty much all things. Yep, I think that was pretty much all of my notes from that. So I don't know if you want to talk about the invitation to bid and whether or not it looks okay. I know. We are. So I didn't see anything. So I guess the the two things, this has to be voted on and approved if that's what you want. And then the bonding, whether or not we require bonding will be the other.
Yeah. I sort of feel like it's part of the everything we do, it's there that there's a reason for that because we would be in a bad position if we don't. So I don't need to, and I think maybe a sister in here, so that to be. And also too, if it's already been put into the budget for it, it's not additional, like it's already expected to pay for that five to eight percent.
We can hope because they still have to give us the bid, so. Yeah.
I think anybody that drops out before. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So I don't want to be dreaming on that. Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know. Can you need a motion for it? Yeah.
We just want to make sure all the basics include bonding.
Yep, I think it's, and it is in there.
Yeah.
Now, mind you, just. Bonding doesn't necessarily is easier. Essentially what you do is substitute the credit of the contractor for bonding. They may assert defenses, not necessarily pay a bond. But at least you have a stop in. As money. That's really the major benefit of bonding company, but it doesn't necessarily insure some smooth fail in it. If there's a dispute between.
Whatever.
Insurance companies, insurance companies may be reluctant.
So they could balk and not pay.
They can assert the defenses.
There may be situations that. Yeah, yeah, that's what you're paying for is that you have to actually be faithful to that.
Anything that jumped out at me as looking I'm not sure that I'm knowledgeable enough to know anything's missing. But. Anybody else have any other questions or?
Sorry, did you send?
It's. It's in the folder and I made one copy because it's so long. Not many copies, but there's a copy here that. It'll affect it a little bit, but I'm, we can, we can try and make sure we work around it. The way I'm kind of seeing it is that we'll still have the tables in here and we'll just. I'm planning on like getting rid of this bookcase or all the stuff that's on that and putting books on there, maybe even putting books over here.
Temporarily put on hold the book sale area.
Yeah. No, I think it'll be okay. I don't, I think that we can, I just need to, we need to baby this, this room a little bit better. But other than that, I think it'll be okay. Uh, yeah. That and, you know, I need a childproof locks on the cabinets and we need, you know. Yeah, yeah, that would definitely, so. We actually have a whole bunch of those right under there with what we use for yoga. So. Okay, thank you. I mean, most of the toys and stuff will probably end up going back upstairs, but we'll keep some of the things that the kids really like. We already cashed the checks that we have to now. Definitely making a motion on this one.
Recommendation. I don't know if that's what's the matter, that was my recommendation, this one.
Mail them tomorrow.
So, um, on that schedule then, so the thirty first for the walkthrough, the interview back on the tenth.
Yes.
I guess, I mean, I, I know that they can do this.
Yeah.
Um, I guess that's part of what we want to see if they can do.
Yep.
Uh, and then our library meeting is on the seventeenth, so you're saying what to meet.
Prior to that, so that.
So, shall, while we're on that project, shall we try? Something? So. The tenth uh, is a Thursday and Thursday's. Is it just, would you say until the end of the day or?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, we'll be able to meet in the evening.
Yeah, be good.
If that works for folks. Or if people want to digest those Thursday's, I suppose, run them out first.
I think, I don't, uh, the way I think that it, usually you open them together as a group, but I don't think we have to do anything specific. So I can just order, I can open them and then give, you know, send them out to everybody and then.
I think we might just force our hands, we'll all sit together and look at it if we, if you send it out and people won't get to it and we will want them coming to do it.
Maybe do it at, like the week before.
You're already the week before.
So the tenth is Thursday and then the meeting is the next Thursday, so you have Friday through Wednesday to meet, to talk about it and go over. I can definitely ask if they would be.
Basically, or you can get numbers, I mean, you're gonna need some input. In the organization. You know, you may have years to kind of steer, who's more reliable, who's easier to work with, who makes them more flexible.
Right.
Work is better.
Yeah. I can definitely ask if he can be available for whatever date we try to meet for, so.
I'm away the week, this, the week of the seventeenth.
That's a great, yeah.
And we scheduled the annual meeting for that day too, that night, six thirty, so. Um, so sorry to not.
Yeah.
Account me, but we won't, we will have a simple majority, so. Well, what works if? Six thirty, if we're doing two weeks in a row. I can try, I have my union meeting at school on that Thursday, which is usually forty-six. So, I would have to go home, let the dogs out in the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think that the architect should be at the meeting? I mean, it's an excellent idea.
Odd four available.
Maybe zoom.
I just think we need your.
Oh, no, I, I totally get it.
I mean, I can ask them also to review the, what they.
I mean, basically, ask them. One of the other things is, I didn't look and see the documents, whether they require people to be at the walkthrough.
It does not require them to be.
And that's just something I'll raise, that if contractors don't show up. It's just, so a lot of them just can also, you can prepare as always we did, I mean, you've got the.
That the space.
Plans with specs.
Yeah.
But you look at the space.
But if you're just looking at. Yeah.
A couple of them. Yeah, a couple of them already have, um, so they might, yeah.
The meeting is at what time on the tenth?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
So, it sounds like we're in agreement, but.
Yes.
Yeah, we can definitely make that work.
And if you need, um, as it moves forward, you know, help to make all this happen.
Oh, and. I will absolutely be needing help to do all that, I don't think I can move all those books on my.
Take all the ones that aren't library books.
All your fiction ones. I am, I'm serious, I'm, I'm serious, we are short of books in Pittsfield. Awesome new Lebanon. Know you have those wonderful light boxes, the fruit loops, it's like hernia city on that box.
Oh, I know, I need to call the person who donated them, she did say, um, if we can't use them, she'll take it back. What? The chongs. Yeah, so I don't know.
Don't, don't get me wrong, New Lebanon will take them. Can't take live, ex Lebanon, that's it.
Even if you just take the cover, the plastic cover?
Uh, we really, we, we really can't take any ex Lebanon, because we don't let New Lebanon dump it, there is others.
Right, okay, makes sense, totally. Um, okay, so I'll make sure I keep in touch with everybody about planning and, you know, once we have.
Could we call on any of our volunteers, do we have? Yeah, we can consider calling food lists.
I have, I have lots of boxes, I have a ton of. No, no, but I also have tons of banker's box, you know, they're a lot, they're smaller than the food. I mean, I can carry them. You want a food loop?
No, I want. I have more books to bring. Okay, I only have chewy boxes, which is not the other way.
Well, that's the problem.
Um.
Even though I'm officially a lugger.
We'll see Karen.
Yeah, I realized there were two other things that I forgot to put onto my report because it's just been one of those couple of weeks. Um, I wanted to let you all know that, um, I've been working with my colleague, the electrician. Um, we are in the process of changing all of our fluorescent lights in the commu, or in the main room there to LED. Because the ballasts keep breaking and instead of putting in another fluorescent light ballast, he's going to put in um, LED, so we're just gonna keep working that, and so we have now two, and we're just gonna keep working our way around as everything dies, we'll refix, so.
And is that why you're doing something that you'd be advised?
No, he's, that's not for that room, it's only for, it's gonna be for this room, um, because that stuff's gonna have to, we'll have to worry about that stuff at another time. Um, uh, and then also just realized, um, it's scholarship time, we need to get the scholarship application out too. So I can get that out and to make sure that if you guys are all okay with it. Start sending it out to the schools and to the different places. I only remembered it because I got something from New Lebanon asking if we're still gonna do one, so. I sent it to them, but. Yeah.
Well, so covered, bridge report, and also covered the organization. So, that track to treasurer's report and the annual donation, that's the topic of fundraising.
Okay, well, we've got, uh, Broadview accounts, uh, add the money market savings, add the deduct ten thousand for a transfer that we made on the eighteenth. And I had ninety-eight thousand that we deposited today, right?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine thousand, even better, okay.
Uh, ninety-five for the. Yeah, ninety-five, oh yeah, no, no. Ninety-nine from Steven, or ninety-five from Steven Towne, and then thirty-three from Rensselaer Academy and fifteen hundred.
That's what, that's what it shows in.
From Stewart's.
That's what it shows in the budget, and the Stewart's donation was seven fifty, uh, based on the annual appeal letter, but since it goes into the building towards the children's, how would we show that?
We'll have to do it as the, um.
In the special projects?
Yeah, or where's the? What is it called, um, on?
Yeah, we have, we have, you know, um. You have miscellaneous income on your fundraising, you know, on your contribution.
No, it's where we put in the, um, the amount that we got from the state, which doesn't show up until we actually spend the money, so. We'll do this, we'll have to do the same thing with that.
Okay. All right, whether how you wanna do it, though. But other than that, uh, as you can see, we're in the, in the red because we finally got some operating money, so, okay. Other than that, uh, the, uh, CD comes up on the tenth of April. When I get back in New York City next week, I will investigate with our good friends at Broadview to see what they recommend. Do we want to pull some of that money out of there?
Well, yeah, so I think we need a, we need a proposal of what we need.
We need to figure out, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, because we pulled, you know, quite a bit out of special projects, we pulled quite a bit out of, uh, money market, uh, you know, special projects and the, uh, business savings, I think, were the two that took the biggest hit, I'd have to look.
Well, we're not going to be able, so I think we can figure that out now, because that'll be before.
Well, if we just wanna, if, if we just wanna throw it back into, uh, you know, back where it came from. I mean, I could go to the Broadview and tell me, okay, fine, this is where you pulled it out of, and we can put it back in those accounts. Split it up the same way, same percentages. Because I think fifty came out of the money market, uh, regular savings, and I want to say twenty-five came out of special project. I mean, and then there was a couple of others, but it was pretty close to, those are the two biggest contributors to the eighty thousand that we got. So I think the best, the best course of action, until we, you know, have with all the construction going on and whatnot, I don't really want to lock up any money for six months. It needs to get back into the operating accounts. So what I'll do is I'll go to Broadview and say, okay, when, when this comes up, I want, you know, fifty, fifty-one thousand to go on the money market, I want thirty thousand to go back into special project savings. That would be the best, that would be the easiest way to do it.
Just be done with.
Yeah, just be done with it, put thirty-one thousand in special projects, put fifty thousand in, and do not renew the CD. Because it ties up eighty thousand dollars and you want to be as liquid as possible. At least until the construction, you know, because we know the bids are gonna come in a little higher than what we think. Only because of materials alone. It just, it just makes more sense, I don't, I really don't want to tie up any more money again, you know, just. Because you never know what's gonna happen between now and the fall. I'm sorry?
You'd rate now?
Uh, four point one three, I mean, the current, the current rate for six months, three, three point nine, something like that. Uh, I think the money market.
The money, well, they all pay interest, but money market's the one.
Money market pays like a one and a half. Yeah, it's one and a half, I think. Maybe, it would be, you know, at the end of the day, we'd probably lose a thousand dollars if we, if we cashed it. But on the other hand, they're, they're cashing in penalties, you'd lose it anyway. You'd lose any interest that supposedly you add, if you cash a CD in early, then you, any, any interest you've earned, you'd lose it. Yeah, I have to look at that.
We can go get the sprinkler solution, Pranamatose, have a better deal for.
Yeah, I mean, let's, yeah, because the bids are coming in on the tenth, and we're meeting with people on the seventeenth. And we have to let the contract so they can start construction in September.
Actually, actually, in the bid, um, there's some, um, to start work on. Project shall commence May nineteenth and be completed no later than July eighteenth. See if that actually, yeah.
That's a lot different than what he told us. The architect said that, you know, unless they're saying they're gonna get it done before the summer season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can always adjust it if we have to, if no, everyone says, no, that's not possible.
He said, when he, when we met, when he zoomed with him, he said, your bids are probably gonna be accepted now, but construction's not gonna start much of the ball, is what he said.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 because he said the, the summer season is for bigger projects.
Yeah.
No, forty-three, obviously, if maybe. That's exactly what I was looking at, I'm like, did I read this? Usually it tells me the percentages.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it, it, you know, we could look into those, um. Capital One does, I think, uh, the Bank of Green County does, down in Chandler, they've got, they've got something like that. Yeah. Sure, I'm pretty loyal to Broadview or whatever their name used to be, I'm still pretty loyal to them because they were so nice to us a couple of years ago.
Oh, dividend earned, so the money market is two point seven five.
CDs only gonna be three point seven.
Better than I thought.
We could throw it all into the money market, these special projects as it is. Yeah, I mean, that would certainly be liquid. Yeah.
I think so, with that, right?
Yeah, two seven five, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, so we'll just.
The plan, so Richard, you said you'll take.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to Broadview and, and, you know, drop the bunch.
Yeah.
It comes up April the tenth, I believe, I believe so.
And our special projects account is one, or excuse me, point one five.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So.
Did money market go up because of our balance being on?
I don't know.
Because I don't remember it being quite that attractive. Okay, good, anyway, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll pray to the CD and throw it into the money markets at two seventy-five. You mean Broadview? Yeah, yeah, they're, they're trying to get, get a foothold. Yeah, they're, the two, the two are very close to each other. There's one in the old ShopRite, I call it the ShopRite Plaza, and then the other one's just right down, one, one there. Oh, there's another one in Skodak, really?
Um, just so you know, Richard, we can transfer this Zup money out of that account, because it's all been, this was all the, pretty much the entire.
So the Zup account?
Okay. Put that back into the checking account.
And, and the scholarship is thirty-four, is thirty-four hundred dollars enough in the scholarship account?
Well, that was what I was gonna, that was my next question I was gonna ask, because we normally do two thousand for it, so I don't know if that's.
With thirty-four, thirty-four hundred in there, we'd be okay. Do you want to move the Zup account also into the money market?
Um, Zup account, yeah, I can go either.
So we just.
It can go into the check, it can go either, either one.
Okay.
I mean, the money's been spent, so.
So once we zero that out, does that can, that account then cancel, or we just, here we go with all the accounts again?
Yeah, I don't know, we can ask them.
Okay. We'll see how many keystrokes it takes. Last time I was here, it was a lot, it was short. Any other questions, good? You.
Um, anyone else have any questions? Okay, next, for now. We made more money than we thought, so. Let's talk about fundraising, we announced it.
It's late, everyone's tired.
And our plan is, um, and I'm reading from my computer because I actually made some changes, yeah, I already got copies, so, um. So we're gonna try to, whoever can help, go there early on Sunday when they open, so we can get them prepared, because we're. So we can get the food prepared, because we're actually gonna be making food.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there for that, and then there, I'm sure that the decorators will also be.
So I eleven is when you. Yeah, I was thinking, we can get that in the island, but I know she said they open at eleven.
She's pretty strict about that.
She, yeah, so I think.
I think that goes as an upside, yeah.
Yeah.
That's five hours.
So I'm just gonna take it down to the trivia stuff. So, my question is, where are we recording the fair license? Uh, it's been submitted, so, okay, last night it was. Send it back until.
So we are.
Four, right, yeah, okay, so I know that, I know, um. I sent it, each and each, I know that, yeah, so I know we're in the table there. Um, and looking at our goals, we kinda kept the same goal as last time. And the prices for tables are the same, um. And something that's gonna be a little bit different, that will be really good for us to actually increase the money that we make. Um, S M S, wherever he works, is actually donating the beer, so we don't have to pay for it.
That's fantastic, that is donate, and also, our overhead is less than it was, because we don't have to. Get the rental car, we're not doing the postcard, we're, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a less expensive place than, um, we were. Planning.
So we need to even figure out what that difference is gonna be, maybe it costs a hundred dollars for the rental. But like you said, we don't have the rental of everything else.
Tables, the chairs, all that, yeah.
Yeah, and also, already had a connection.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they're gonna donate twenty-four in.
S M S, this is really good too, because, um, it's not gonna be another tag that we have to kind of pay for if we don't use it. They're gonna give us, um, at cost, cider also, so obviously, we're gonna sell what we get for free first. And then whatever they give us, which is also gonna be nine pen, um, whatever we don't sell, we'll take back. So we're not gonna lose any money there.
That's great.
Yeah, um, and then.
And we're getting the wine at the same place, we're getting the food.
Getting the food, yeah, so we have at Restaurant Depot, we have, um, a car for there. That we can use, and it's really discounted because it's restaurants, but they also have.
Do you have a tax-free one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a tax-free Restaurant Depot.
You're gonna get, but I do have all the information.
No, I have, I have one if you need it, yeah.
You want to sleep in type of park?
Yes. For my church. They never buy anything there, I do. It's like BJ's.
Oh, if I just get it.
Yeah, and then we can reimburse you, oh, yeah.
Or that, I can go with you and just put it on my client's account and get reimbursed afterwards.
Okay, because I have what I need, I, the application and everything to actually get one to the library. Yeah, I actually put the application in online, but they said, yeah.
You have to literally go there and get, and play.
No, but I think, I think this will be really good, people save some money. For us, um, if we, we can skip down to the food, so we were planning and jumping with any suggestions. We're planning on giving appetizers and. Getting something at Restaurant Depot. Whatever, it was like, something kind of easy to make, to put out, um, we were going to. Make it easy again, um, make spaghetti salad, we just have fried rolls. Um, desserts, we were gonna ask if the board could do desserts again. And whoever else, because I know there were other people who donated desserts, also, I don't know who.
Like, it seemed like there were other people.
Yeah.
Well, that's recommended, yeah.
So I don't know if we have any other people we could ask. Um, we could ask a couple of our baker, our Bella volunteer baker people who come through, like maybe Lynn Barrett, she does nice stuff. Ask some people there, that would be great.
I can, I can do the appetizers.
Wanted to make.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make some cheese straws again, those dissipate like dew before the sun. And then the little bagel dogs, whatever those are.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can do, those, those are really popular, so, and I can provide those.
Okay, um, we were gonna see, um, for sodas, like we did last time, if board members could donate. Um, water, I have, um, a couple of those big dispensers, and we were just gonna use those instead of spending the money on.
We have bottled water over here, like, we have so much bottled water that we're, yeah, so.
We wanted to.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, we're doing pans, right?
Oh, cans.
Pans, just to make it easier for us, um, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. When, um, and I know, Richard, you've been in there, sorry, you've been in there, yeah, I think the setup will work. It's different, it's not as big as the fire hall, obviously, but I kinda like it better. I was in there today, and I saw it was set up nicely for one hour, and they had.
That's the seniors over there tomorrow.
It's kinda like, one after the other, but it, it sorta works.
It sorta works.
And also, you can do your silent auction in the other room.
But there's the game room.
The game room for the silent auction will be very good.
Ball, table.
Yeah.
I would think that auction, or, I don't know.
The cocktail.
Right, with something.
But you could also put appetizers, appetizers, I don't know if you'd wanna put the bar over there. Yeah, with the, in the kitchen, that's, that's, that's really important.
And I think we need to keep.
Access to the space, um, so, and we said, here's where the dollars, so.
I think that would be really good for the launch.
Yeah.
So what it's like set up with a bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I think, I think the place is gonna be great, and I, Alyssa is just the best.
Yes, she is.
Like, when we, I told her, we're talking about dates in the beginning, because we couldn't do this Saturday. So I can see what people think about the Sunday, she's, I hope you do it Sunday, because then I can go.
Aunt Tistria was there when I was there, and she was super nice and excited too, so they just seemed like so great to work with.
We're in there to get the application. And I was just kind of looking around, and I was like, oh, you know, I'm just looking around, I'm from Seattown Library, and we're thinking about maybe. You know, renting, all of a sudden, the woman's like, she calls someone, and she's like, somebody might be renting the hall. Feeling of some, like, oh my god, they were honest to be here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was really. Okay, so then, you can see, we have.
Two questions, did I, I think I was looking for to make a vegan or, um. Need the options, did I, oh, am I recalling that correctly, did I do that?
You did, yeah. Is it a vegan or gluten?
Vegan or gluten?
There we go.
It's, we did ask them. So in the form, we'll know, like, what we have, so instead of kind of discussing if we need rush can or if we need free or whatever.
We don't have to make too much of anybody's special issue.
If somebody wants it, I will do it. So we'll see what we get from that, and then we'll let you guys know to help us out with that. Um, so we have a bunch of silent auction items.
I got a yes from Mario's, because that needs to be updated, they said yes, I don't know, I think they get some.
That's good.
And for the Shelley's Treats, were we thinking of combining that with the tea, caddies?
We could, we could, and I was thinking we can kind of. See what we get and like, have another small meeting before.
Yeah, we definitely.
Kind of bring everything together, and how do we wanna.
Yeah, what looks, what looks, what makes sense to combine.
Things together, um, so again, if there's anything that you guys see, or, um. Did somebody, somebody did ask Patty about the dog basket, right?
Yes, I did, and she said yes.
So these knees has closed.
I think the UZ is.
Yeah.
Did they close? If you wait long, we're gonna have to do nine. She's definitely up.
Yes.
She was actually.
You know, I kinda, I went into, um, this needs one second. It just, it just seemed like there wasn't a lot, and I was just worried that it wasn't gonna be enough for them to stay.
It was very, it's, it was a great place, it was really, they made good stuff.
Was it? Howling down in Lebanon, what about the Blueberry Hill or, um?
Yeah, the also ones on North.
That's some for a lot of donations before, and she's been not so pleasant, but yeah, so.
Yeah, you probably.
Tell, tell them they have the best bagels, don't, don't tell them about it. They get their bagels from Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, but you know, it's the home of excellent bagels.
I, he posted.
Yeah, I can. Okay, um, so prizes, we were, we're just gonna, we could figure out how the prizes are gonna work, just so it's not like one big one, like, a little smaller.
So we're having two sessions and the top three in each session, so there's gonna be six prizes.
You have how many questions per session?
I think we talked about ten.
Ten makes sense.
Yeah, and we already started, uh, list, started working on some questions.
I have two boxes of the trivial pursuit question, if you wanna look at those. Somebody who's nice enough to share those. Hmm, I don't know if you have it up there.
We have.
Then this is just the regular flavor, this is not baby boomer.
Yeah, we have a lot, yeah, yeah. We just need to decide on that, and, and we need to update the candle, um, the slideshow.
With the, with a new orientation of two rather than three rounds and button and something like that.
We're running a total shit every team now, so.
Yeah, so a lot of the other things are gonna be the same, um. We're changing, we're not gonna have donations or some tables, but we are gonna have a couple just there.
At the bar, okay.
Um, and we are gonna give the option of having a team name.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna camp in a little sign, like a little chalkboard sign.
Oh, that'd be cute. It's gonna be, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, because we're, we're giving different pricing for tables of six and four, the tables. Take ten people, so there's gonna be the same table number for two different teams, so we're kind of gonna. Need both the table number and the team name, so we're gonna.
Just do team name, because that's how most places do it.
I thought you thought that would be using, no?
Because it.
Depends on why I want that.
The answers, it's not gonna matter where they're sitting.
We just have to make sure, let's just make sure that we write. Cards before we, because none of these were picked up that didn't have a number.
There wasn't, there wasn't too many, there was a, a couple, there was a couple.
You, there's, I mean, it wasn't cards, it was just pieces of paper, and it said team name, and they have to fill that out for each question they answer.
You can give each table a ten cards and even put the, put their team name.
Yeah, or they have to put it out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Team, yeah.
And then question number one, question number two, yeah.
And you need to remind people that they have to put their names on top, or they're not gonna be counted.
Right.
Instead of doing it by hand, we also just get a bunch of card stock and print it out, and then cover it.
We don't have to color book.
Not with team names, you know.
Not with team names, but whatever we have left over, so we don't have to buy more stuff, it would be good.
I don't know. Okay.
As everybody's signing up as a team, then there's no individual.
Well, when you hit the door, you'll be added to a team. If you're coming, coming in as.
One side, like. Or if they don't want a teammate, there's a, our initials.
Well, I was thinking of the team name is like, you, whatever you get in there, you know, so you come on together.
Yeah.
And if they aren't foreign people, then they can just write, like.
Jones. Team number five.
If you can't think of the name, it's string four.
Yeah, I think that would be easier.
I'm still sort of.
And I'd like a list of the names so we can. We have the following teams here, you know, announce the names, which would be kind of fun, because I'm sure some of the names will be interesting.
I mean, you can just look at it quickly.
Because I don't have a team name, but, yeah, yeah, I can't take it, but, yeah, that's fine.
I'm still a little concerned that, that there's nothing to be done about it, because there are tables, everybody's close to each other, there's gonna be tables of six and four, so a team. And they're, how, they're not gonna hear what they're saying to each other.
They're just gonna have to be quiet.
Yeah, that's their problem.
It worked out okay the last.
But it's keeping me up at night. Yeah, the noise machines are.
The little cardboard, like.
How many tables, how many tables? How many tables?
I think we were thinking that we.
Cause I mean.
Up to ten.
So. Oh, okay, I saw you doing that. How, how many tables we had the last time at, at Four Five Fall?
That was what I was gonna ask.
There weren't any double tables at Four Five Fall.
There are a lot of tables.
We had different styles of tables, we had small tables.
Well, I mean, once again, I mean, we have. Yeah, they're bigger. I've got, I've got those ten or twelve tables over at the church that are smaller. Plus, I've got the round tables, I've got six of those now. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, that, that's for the committee to decide, but we do have tables available at Four Five, that are smaller than.
Let's see, let's see who signs up, we gotta be signed up. Four, or if we have a lot of the fours, then maybe we'll try to go that way.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Because I mean, I.
I thought that, um, if we, since we're cutting costs in other, so many other places, if we wanted to like. Try to rent four top, you know, like a bunch of the square tables, so that they all kind, I think it's hard to like bring a few tables here, a few tables there, a few tables here, but.
And it's kind, it's a fundraiser for a library, I mean, people are used to that kind of stuff. I mean, literally, I have access to six round forty-eight inch tables.
Um, and I don't know how much, or if the, I can reach out to the kids, people, I think they can borrow some. But they just, they fold out like a trifold board, you know, pretty big board, and they just sit there, it's enough to give you like a.
This feeling.
Like a feeling here.
And it's almost a reminder to. Quiet. Of course, I think everybody's gonna understand.
And people are gonna be like, oh, I'm not doing this, I want my money back.
And everyone was packed in at Four Five Fall, so it's not like they were, and everyone got super quiet, they were, I think they were good. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the screen and the projector, that's all there, correct?
Oh, so we don't need.
Having projector. Yes.
The screen and projector.
I, I don't know, projector's in a weird spot, it's above, like, it's over by where the kitchen is. Point, points out.
Once we decide, I can.
Yeah.
If we need it.
And you've got a big, you've got a big old wall again, you could use, just like we did at Four Five Fall.
Like, uh, like make it a bit springy.
No, I think they have a, they have a blank wall to do.
I remember maybe somewhere, but I don't know if it was there or if it was there. Where you can't take things.
It was probably the fire.
You've seen that space.
Yeah, this just say that.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're gonna have any.
I can, I can make my voice.
Yeah, we don't need to bring all those your phones and stuff.
Right, they have, that's great, yeah.
Should we just get one for the library?
Yeah, one twenty-seven.
Yeah, but I also said I could. And I could donate Toshi and like.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we have a whole piece that.
I didn't, I didn't go in the kitchen, so I didn't see. If there were people in there, I didn't wanna.
I think the kitchen will be perfect, and it's gonna be really nice, the fact that people don't have to walk through the kitchen.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, they can come in, they can come in either through the.
Either way.
Either way, but primarily there's that hallway there. Coming into the main room. That's where you're gonna set up your, uh, you know, entry, entry area.
Um, so I think the, the last thing we did, details we can work out, but. So we need to start really pushing this marketing wise and also getting some emails out. Uh, do, do our full list. Yeah, so, is somebody gonna make, um, flyer that we had?
I, I have a flyer that I can print out. Yeah, I have it and I can print it out, and, um, you have the Facebook post that I sent you. Press release went out. I got a, um, email from, um, Eastwick asking me if we changed the date and they hadn't somehow seen the new one, and I said, oh, I sent it on this day, and then she said she found it, so I hope it doesn't screw up the other. Uh, yeah, I said, you know, in the future, if we make a change, what's the best way to address it? And once you already have a press release, then I have no idea.
So with the flyers, um, because it's gonna be coming close for, well, and actually, I won't be at the April meeting, like, is there gonna be, will they be here? So we can all kind of pick up some if we want some to bring them places.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll.
We can email them out. We've just been.
I'll email them. I can just make up. Or you can make up these here. I usually put them around town. And I can do that like tomorrow or something.
I don't have a printer at home, so that's why I was just asking.
No, I think I can take it down to chat on my estream.
We can print it here. Do you want? Oh, I'm gonna show you.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the Facebook, that's the Facebook piece. Uh, Facebook post, but it's just like that, basically.
Yeah.
It's just.
Star trivia.
Yeah, it's. No, that was it.
That was it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'll print out, how many do you want me to print out? Cause I'll just do it tonight or tomorrow morning when I come in.
Um, let me just double, wanna take a quick, yeah, so. Um, I don't know, what do you think? Um, twenty and there aren't that many places around town you can really put them. Um, but he, here, um, at the.
New Lebanon Library, get to the, the Post Office.
Yeah, you could do the New Lebanon.
I'm gonna make thirty, and then guys will just come in and, and I can always print them out again.
Okay, I'll be taking.
But remember the thing that people post likely to respond to for this survey was the Facebook face, post.
Everyone, they have to, they share it and also invite, yeah, the, it, the meeting one or the event one and invite your Facebook friends. I think that really helps get it directly into people.
Um, I'll. So what happens if we, like, like, we were thinking we weren't gonna get people, and then before we knew it, at the last minute, we had ninety-six people. What happens if we get to some sort of critical number that's two?
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of them were real last minute, but yeah.
Yeah.
The day, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, okay, we had some, we had some traffic in the door.
Yeah, and I knew that people who didn't, who registered but didn't show up.
I think, I think we had eighty, eighty or eighty-five people with three registered, and the whole bundle was like ninety.
It was ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Okay.
We'll walk in traffic, but most of it was like the last week we got a rush. Well, no, I mean, you know, everybody says, well, we're planning on doing that, and they all say, yeah. I know of at least two teams.
Sorry, the only thing I, I do know, cause I know you have, like, some other people had also helped.
Patty, Patty, I already included. Yeah, she's gonna work on. Team one being lead.
Yeah, yeah, way, but I think you could, I think she would be.
Yeah, these seem to really, like, can be into it and helpful, and yeah. Um, yeah, we should have a meeting date when we just kind of finalize everything. Um, not too far away, but not far enough away that if we've forgotten something, we.
That's helping, somebody else is helping too. I feel like we needed that to get that, it took like two hours. To like set up all the tables. The, the centerpieces took a long time, so I feel like there's things that I could probably do that would make it go a little bit faster.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, Patty said she didn't wanna do the balloon thing, cause it took too long and was too much for me to do.
Yeah. They just, even a day off, like, that's something that I would have, like, pressed the button boxes already.
Oh, yeah, if you can do that, that'd be, that'd be great.
Well, obviously, like, you know, table wise and.
And you know the brand colors, so we were trying to, as much as possible, stick with the brand.
Are you, are you going? Are you gonna go over to the space and check out the tables? See how it works. How many tables are there? I have a whole lot of tables.
I think they're like ten. Well, but they, they accommodate ten to twelve people. Or was it eight to ten? I think it was ten to twelve.
We can, we can.
You'll use for the sound.
Yeah.
We can bring some.
They do have, they do, they do have card tables in the, uh, game area.
Yeah, I think we can use.
Could maybe use some of those, and, and we can always have other tables available. You know. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Do you wanna set the meeting now, so we have a date?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay.
We're not holding everybody out.
Okay.
There was another item I wanted to mention, um, uh, well, I think we'll address it after April, I think the timing makes more sense anyway, but last year, sort of in conjunction with annual meeting, we, uh, sent out a mail that was an impact report. It was not a fundraising thing per se, however, several, then we did get donations related to it. Um, I think we should consider that again, but my thought, and this is something we've talked about, is, um, I think it would be beneficial to use it as our, as both an impact, we're talking about what we've done, and previewing what's coming up with the renovation, um, and, and other things. So I think if we can use it as a dual purpose, it's not necessarily directly fundraising, but maybe a prep to some fundraising related to the renovation and some prep for the, getting, good work out there for four fourteen, but I think having more information about the renovation project will be better.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that would be addressed not yet.
Okay, I can maybe start working on something, cause I'm gonna have to do the annual report anyway.
Right, so for us. Okay, uh, quick update, uh, on the. But, uh, so, uh, the. Uh, last, last meeting, she sent a proposal with the, with the specific update. She recommended to solve this problem, and can have come back to the accountant. Um, so we're gonna just wait to hear back on that. Hopefully, we can move forward with those changes, get those items cleaned up, and then, um, then we just have to move forward with some updates in terms of making sure we have the, uh, accounting set up correctly for the renovation project, um, and then, and, uh, get that straightened up and a few other cleanup items in terms of how we. But it would be great also to just have that done, so that we have our balance sheet in, in good order, uh, as we know for, so we said.
Well, I am still waiting to hear back from the accountant, so as soon as I do, I will let you all know. Hopefully, I'll get back to you soon.
Um, okay, and four fourteen, um, I don't, there's no real update. We had the meeting like last month. There is the meeting webinar coming up next Thursday, next Thursday, which I think would be good to just hear, um, from, and I thought after that we should probably meet to begin our own plans. I'm now a little concerned, though, I think we've got a lot coming up for, in the timeframe before the next meeting. Um, that makes me think we're not gonna get this, with, with the renovation work sort of take some time of our in between meeting time. I think we may have a difficult time doing that, but Scott, your thoughts?
I would think the main issue with the end connection of four fourteen is whether the library is gonna decide to undertake this, doing this every year, uh, every other year, or sort of what we did the last time, which was figure out we, we'll do it again in five years. Upper Hudson encourages doing it every. I don't know what the best thing to do is, um. I'm concerned with waiting for like, planning out five years, because that's a big, that's a crack. But the question I think we need to figure out is I think it may be better to do it every other year rather than every year, which makes, certainly makes sense. And I think we need to just figure out what the numbers look like in terms of inflation, so that we can make an intelligent decision. Think about it, in terms of what do we think we need to carry us. I've got a concern in connection with doing this in conjunction with the improvement of. So I don't, you know, it's just, I just don't know how that plays.
Right.
It's all gonna be in the messaging, if we can say, you know, we got a grant, we got a, all of the day. Hopefully, it won't be too bad.
I, unlike the bullions of the people that Upper Hudson have in connection with the likelihood of success.
Yeah.
Well, they must be the numbers, though, that was the thing. Yeah. Yeah, I don't either.
The lemon does it every, they do it every year. Oh, I'm sure they do. But I mean, I, I just know Michelle said she does it every year.
Which doesn't, that doesn't change anything.
So I think these are exactly the things we need to sort of start to hammer out and come up with a recommendation, and, and so I think there's two paths we need to come up with that, we need to figure out what is the things we wanna do, how often, based on that, and the money that we're thinking, and then put together that schedule, which fortunately, Upper Hudson has really done for us, but we just need to actually plug in our own plan into the recommended timeframe and make sure we're gonna keep up.
Is the webinar going to be, are we gonna do it together here at six thirty, or?
That's, that's a question, so.
Is that gonna be different than what we heard?
Uh, it sounds like there's more opportunity discussion amongst folks. So that could be beneficial, I think. Yeah, is it for everybody or for the committee? I mean, anybody can go to that. All right. Uh, I think I forwarded that. So I'm just, I'm trying to think practically about this, if we are going to have the uh, brain power and focus to talk about that in the midst of reviewing the bids, discussing that, and getting the tribute event done in April.
I'm not sure reviewing the bids is going to be such a taxing process, because you're gonna get numbers.
Well, what's, what's gonna happen is we're gonna go.
What do you think?
I'm not sure I share your view.
Order of the day somewhere. Not one of those pearls that normally gets dropped. Oh, no, they were like, this is no problem, look at the results, everybody's successful, it's great, yada, yada.
We spent a lot of time last month, because we need to get a ten percent of the uh, ten percent of the voters in the last gubernatorial election. So we needed to get nine, five hundred signatures. We've got a lot of signatures. Um, we don't need, we can need to need twenty-five now, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
However, I think the petition was one of the most effective ways of identifying who your supporters were.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, so we have that, I have all that stuff from seven years ago.
And without that, we're flying.
But, but it's seven years. My suggestion is that we spend a lot of positioning, not understand the fact that we don't have to do it a lot, because I think it creates an opportunity to identify who your likely voters are. Uh, we also sent follow-up postcards and handwritten letters to all, as I recall, and I think that was we spent some money doing it, I think that was also. So those are the kinds.
Money did we spend? Cause we can't spend the library money on that.
Well, I understand. I don't remember, but I think we contacted people. But I mean, these are other things that I think we should think about.
So do we wanna meet ahead of next month meeting to start to hash that out? Would the committee chair like to propose a date or send out an email to, uh?
We're in the middle of a bunch. Um, yeah. It's either gonna be, uh, I don't know when it's gonna be, it's gonna be Wednesday. And we could do it in person.
Okay, so you wanna send down dates?
Yeah.
Date two is good for you, and we'll see if we can make that work for the committee. Okay, awesome. Okay, um, we don't really do, I mean, not that we're supposed to, but we haven't really done a formal nominating committee for our annual meeting. Um, that is coming up next, the beginning, uh, first part of the meeting next month. Um, we have two. Yeah, two, our two newest members are the two people who are up for, um, election because. Yeah, two, our two newest members are the two people who are up for, um, election because of completing terms. So we and Liz, if I have this correct. So your terms technically, your terms inherited, took over and, and this, this year. So you will be on the slate, um, for nominating for your first vote in terms.
How would be your campaign?
He's got the petitions already, so he's good to go.
I think so, yeah, and I might even have some of the old ones. So it would be, so. Liz and.
And then we accept nominations from the floor, et cetera. I don't know if we have any new, new for our ninth, the sharp.
I have, I have a, um, copy of the twenty twenty-three. Uh, notice that we put out, so I can just use the same thing and put that out.
Um, so if anybody knows of anybody, but if not, I assume we're just going to have. So that'll happen for the annual meeting. And then Richard, we usually have the financial report, annual report.
Okay.
Annual report.
The annual budget, just.
Yeah, and you can look back at what last year's looked like on the.
Okay. I can also just run that and.
Yeah, I think we published the twenty twenty-four final numbers plus, um, a, a kind of summary document. It's a little bit different. Um, but it's up there on the website.
I can't remember that.
Um.
What's the date of the meeting again, sorry?
It's right before our, our annual meeting, seventeen.
April the seventeenth.
So six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yeah, we're not doing this on Sunday.
Got it, got it.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, old business, the annual report, as Kim mentioned, so she, she sent it out. We have it a month's time. Uh, I did go back and forth with a few questions with Kim, what she addressed, framing books. I have a few that I have questions about. It happens somewhere. It would just be a multiple two.
I wouldn't make a decision.
No public for comment, but we do have correspondents. Good job on the entire morning for the team. Thank you for the holiday bonus. I feel appreciated. Smile with it. I am also thankful for the hourly increase. You all do your part to make working at the library a pleasure. Part, Elaine.
Sweet.
All right, any other new business, old business we missed? Any business at all?
Don't think so.
I want to thank you for letting me put the eleven and flip sale sign up on the door. Thank you.
In exchange, you may take all of your.
I will, I, I, not, not tonight, but I will get. Yeah, well, that's.